You pull the mic down a little closer, Brian. Thank you.
Right there. Short folks. Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to give you a little more background on how we have gotten to where we are today. We've been working on the design of this project for approximately nine months. And as you know, this, this design incorporates a lot of the things that we've talked about in prior meetings for rehabbing the gym, for making it more functional, some type of catering facility within the gym, seating, making it as multipurpose as possible with the existing structure that we have. So as Dr. Ledbetter said, Kyle Epstein was our architect for this. He was also the architect for the Rosenwall School Building. And he has a lot of historical experience in rehabbing old buildings. We, we got the plans completed. We advertised that approximately three weeks ago. And we were slated to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting with contractors last week. We reached out to all contractors who have bid on all of our recent projects. And even though they may not have submitted a bid, they expressed interest in prior projects. So we had approximately 10 contractors that we sought bid, sought interest from. We also had it under Georgia Procurement, which is a statewide website that contractors will review on a daily basis. And so that, that's out statewide. It was on Spalding County website. So we advertised this in all the, the normal network we had, including reaching out individually to these prior contractors. We thought we had some interest in it, but you never know until people show up or don't show up. So last week, we had our pre-bid meeting. We had no contractors show up. So we have since reached out to some contractors who did not come that possibly, they expressed some possible interest in this. And they're basically telling us there's so much work out there right now of new construction that they can pick and choose on a brand-new building that has very few question marks and very few unknowns. and get him to share the particulars of the background and just open up for dialogue, the discussion between the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Upson and staff with respect to what's going on with the contract that it's being bid and how it's being bid and maybe get some dialogues started about what options are available for us as we move this program forward. Mr. Upson?
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You pull the mic down a little closer, Brian? Thank you.
Right there. Short folks. Yeah, I'd like to give you a little more background on how we have gotten to where we are today. We've been working on the design of this project for approximately nine months. And as you know, this design incorporates a lot of the things that we've talked about in prior meetings for rehabbing the gym, for making it more functional, some type of catering facility within the gym, seating, making it as multipurpose as possible with the existing structure that we have. So as Dr. Ledbetter said, Kyle Epstein was our architect for this. He was also the architect for the Rosenwall School Building. And he has a lot of historical experience in rehabbing old buildings. We got the plans completed. We advertised that approximately three weeks ago. And we were slated to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting with contractors last week. We reached out to all contractors who have bid on all of our recent projects. And even though they may not have submitted a bid, they expressed interest in prior projects. So we had approximately 10 contractors that we sought bid, sought interest from. We also had it under Georgia Procurement, which is a statewide website that contractors will review on a daily basis. And so that's out statewide. It was on Spalding County website. So we advertised this in all the normal network we had, including reaching out individually to these prior contractors. We thought we had some interest in it, but you never know until people show up or don't show up. So last week, we had our pre-bid meeting. We had no contractors show up. So we have since reached out to some contractors who did not come that possibly, they expressed some possible interest in this. And they're basically telling us there's so much work out there right now of new construction that they can pick and choose on a brand-new building that has very few question marks and very few unknowns versus a rehab. And unfortunately, in the times we're in right now, they're going to these easier, low-hanging fruit projects. And we're not giving up, but we're just telling, I'm just telling you how we have gotten to where we are today. So our intent as of now is to rebid this, take it back and re-advertise this, extend the timeframe to a two-month bid, extend the pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid out a month and start reaching out again, trying to find suppliers, trying to find any other network of people that we can get interest from contractors and continue to seek out bids. But unfortunately, right now, the market is such that they don't want to do a rehab project when they can do a new project. That's just the bottom line.
So are these all 10 contractors you're referring to or is it just a few of those? Or is it all of them? Or?
Well, some of them we did not hear back from. We reached out, we sent the invitation to bid individually to these contractors. Some came back and asked a couple of questions that we thought they might have interest in bidding. We even had a contractor that was not in our original pre-bid group that reached out. We thought they may be interested, but when the day came to meet, which was a mandatory meeting, they had to be at this meeting in order to be a bidder of record, nobody showed up.
And as far as the net that we cast out to find these contractors, just can you explain that process? Like how, the net, how far is that net? How wide is that?
Well, Georgia Procurement Registry is primarily a statewide net, but it is a, it's on the internet. So if somebody from adjoining states wanted to pursue projects, it's out there on the website, out there in this big procurement. It's a huge procurement. I mean, the counties and cities use this for any type of bidding, whether it's equipment, whether it's supplies, but a lot of construction projects are on this website as well.
Yes, ma'am. I reached across to one of our adjoining counties, county managers, and asked them specifically who they had recently received bids from after listing the projects on Georgia Procurement. And they were receiving bids from construction companies in South Carolina, North Carolina and Florida. So the Georgia Procurement system actually reaches nationally. And back to Brian's point, we have just not received a single bid for this project. And one of the things that I would really like to share with our Board of Commissioners and our community is this is a project that we're not dragging our feet on. We are actually working very diligently to push this project forward. And we could use some help trying to understand how we can engage contractors to come bid on the project. And we would encourage some additional discussions on what other options are there for this project, if there are any. Don't know, but we can sure explore it. And how do we move this project forward so that we can actually get construction started and work toward completion?
So previous constructions with previous roles involved buildings and other historical buildings?
Animal shelter, other projects that we've done recently, not necessarily Spalding County projects, we've had other projects that we reached out to those contractors and asked for any interest. But there were 10 that were directly associated with prior bidding or prior interest in Spalding County projects that we reached out to individually. Nobody came back with any interest in this particular project.
Brian, is this because of our cost is too low?
Oh, there's no cost associated with this. We've not identified, we've not put any type of budget in the advertising because we don't want to skew that. This is strictly, from what I'm getting feedback on, strictly it is a rehab project, which is a much more difficult, a lot of unknowns, a lot more time-consuming. This building is going to have to be braced as we build it back because we don't know the structural, the strength of the structural components that if we start tearing the roof out, all the walls are going to cave in. So we've got this pre-work that's got to be done before they can even start rehabbing. And contractors now, they want to throw a building up and go. And they're not interested in all, if we were in tough times, we would have a lot of bidders and they would do it to keep the lights on. But in today's world, there's still so much work out there, so much new work, there, we can't get the interest in the rehab work.
Okay. All right, so we really have, the steps moving forward are first, we're going to rebid.
Well, we're going to re-advertise.
Extend the time and all that that you just said.
Re-advertise, yes.
Yeah, okay. And second option is?
Well, the first option includes casting our net wider, trying to find go-to suppliers to say, what contractors would you recommend that we have? They may not read Georgia Procurement, but just trying to cast that net as wide as we can to find any interest in the project. That's the first step.
Okay. And the second step? The second option, alternative option, or whatever words you want to use?
I don't have a second option. I know there's been discussion about possibly building a new building, emulating the scale, I mean, the size, possibly bigger, but the actual facade, some of the components that are in this building, putting that in a new building. But that's a discussion that you guys need to have. And I think we at least need to exhaust the first option.
That's exactly right.
My goal is to get a bid, then you have a lot more tools to make a decision. If I can come back to you with a number and you have that now as a hard number, y'all can make a decision, okay, is it economically feasible to do this or could we get twice the bang for our buck building a new building? But I'm not ready to even say that until we exhaust option one.
All right, how long before we think we'll know about option one?
We're going to advertise it for two months. So we can advertise it next week. And that two months will start in a month. We're going to know if we have any interest because we're going to have that pre-bid meeting in a month. And the reason I'm doing it for a month is just to try to get that net cast further and further out to get interest.
Okay. Ms. Gwen, thoughts?
Yes. I'm just a little troubled by your use of rehab because I was thinking that this was a restoration. And I think that when you go and you do a bid, there's a difference in how people are going to look at it if it's a rehab of a building. And it may just be a matter of semantics or restoration. And if it is a restoration, then it's a different kind of folk who are going to do that work. If it is rehab, then you got something different.
Well, let me say this, that was my word, that's not what, that's not what's on the orig, the documents say renovations too.
So I think what we call it is a big deal. Secondly, I wonder, you know, are we going to the African-American Historic Societies? Are we looking at preservation for African-American historic buildings? I mean, where are we stepping out beyond the people who can put an air conditioning in or who can do a flooring? And I'm just saying this as a way of us looking at other areas that have done restorations to building. My final comment about that is that, yes, I think it's a good idea to rebid it out. But I think that if anything else is decided, there certainly needs to be some public input.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not even sure that even making the decision to go forward with rebidding it again is a good idea without, I mean, you know, we could be pushing it out, but we really need to know the individuals who have come up here and asked for this in this community, people who voted for in the Sploes, were very integral part of deciding what was going to happen at that building. And if there's any change in what it is that we're going to do, which if we're just putting it out for bid again, there isn't a change.
That's right.
But I think that there absolutely needs to be multiple conversations with the community about this is where we are, how are people feeling, do they have other suggestions? I mean, you know, we just, I think we have to step outside of, step outside of the mold that we normally use. We don't really have somebody here who can go out and try to look for a corporate sponsorship. There may or may be one, but you know, that's not your job necessarily to go out and look for that, but I think that's certainly an option. So yeah, that's all I got to say before anything is changed. I think that if we walk through with the community to get to the point that this is what it's going to look like and this is what it's going to be, we shouldn't make any moves off the trail until we have public input. Because I want people to know there's full transparency about this, about the money, about the bids. And I get it, you know, maybe we're not the low-hanging fruit right now, but it's not in our purview to scrap anything that was voted on by Spal.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're not, we have no intention of doing that. And certainly, we wouldn't come to you and say, let's change. I'm going to take direction from you on what needs to be changed, if anything, but we're prodding along with the original plan, what has been designed based on all the meetings that we've had. So everything is what the community's talked about in these plans. We're just trying to find contractors that are willing to do the work.
May I ask, and this is just a statement more than a question, I'm not a contractor by no means, but from a contractor's, I guess, point of view, and you're a business person, and I get it, you know, maybe renovations, renovating a building is different obviously than a brand-new construction building. I understand that. These companies, I guess, that have actually at one time were interested in this project. I just think about the experience because I think, you know, I would think anybody may want to take on, not necessarily do a building or do these renovations because that's what it is as compared to a new constructional building. So, you know, I mean, I know we're flourishing right now, we think, but I would still think that, you know, there would be some opportunities for some contractors who, you know, have been around, who have the longevity, the experience, that want to task this type of project.
Well, I'll give you an example, Mija Construction, who's doing the Aquatic Center now. They do a lot of schoolwork and they do a lot of renovation of schools. They did Taylor Street Auditorium, which was a, they're working on that, which is a renovation of the auditorium. So they have that experience, they have that background to do it. They're just bidding projects that are new projects versus renovations. So that's what feedback, I mean, I don't have a gun I can hold to the head to make a bid, but the bottom line is they're not, they're seeing too much of the new work to want to tackle this type of work right now. And it's, it has nothing to do with budget, has nothing to do with schedule. I mean, we're not putting a very tight schedule on them. It's just that when they can go out and build a 10,000-square-foot new building with very few question marks, they'll take that over, they'll put their manpower to that over a renovation building.
From the day that they, that the work started on the Rosenwall School, how long was that construction until the building was complete?
Eighteen months. Does that sound long? Sure. Is it 24? Yeah, at least. 24.
Did people come to speak? Did people sign up to speak?
They did not.
This was just us talking. And one of the things we have, I hate to say this, but we have time. You know, we've waited, we can continue to wait till the opportunity is right for us to be able to do this. I'm trying to move it along, but I am absolutely, positively against any kind of stop. We're not doing this. So, you know, this is, the economy could change 100% and contractors turn around and say, we'll take anything. And this is, so it's been a while since we approved this. So another, you know, six months could be the right thing for us to do. So I'm, so everybody knows my position, I'm absolutely against saying we're not doing this. That's a long way from where we are as far as I'm concerned right now. Okay?
So the decision today is just to rebid and open the, start the net wider?
In about five weeks, I'm going to be able to tell you the level of interest again.
Okay.
So I can come back to you and update you on that and then you can start thinking about, okay, now we have some people interested, let's charge forward or what are our other options? But I think, let me get through this.
Yep.
Re-advertising, get that net cast out wider, see if we can't get interested parties to bid on this, and I can report back on that progress.
And you've given us a couple of things to really go and push on. The African-American Historic Society staff, I'll actually reach out and I'll ask staff to support and help with that. And in five weeks, I would appreciate the opportunity to bring an update back to the board for where we stand on what Brian is putting together for us for the rebid. There's also a couple of other things that I heard you say, really push on corporate sponsorships for how we can, how we engage our community, especially our corporate community here locally, on supporting this. And one of the ways that we can do that is we can ask back through our corporate sponsors, through the IDA or otherwise, and encourage their contractors to come and support this effort as we walk forward. But there's an ask that I and staff would have a view. Please help us cast this net out as far as we can for contractors and encourage all who are able to come and be a part of the bid process and bid on the work that we have for this just outstanding project. And help us in that regard. One of the things that I'm really confident with respect to sharing with you is that staff is committed to moving forward on this project, but we wanted to share with you and have this dialogue with you about where we are, what our challenges are currently, and how we see the next steps progressing, which is rebidding the work and hope prayerfully. It's not a hope, it's a prayer. In five weeks, we'll come back to you and let you know that we've got a number of contractors who are willing to bid on the work as we move this forward.
Same thing with not just us, with the public. Public being able to find somebody that maybe we don't know about that says, hey, a friend of a friend that is working somewhere else that they can talk into saying, hey, get involved here. So anybody out there in TV land that's watching, if you know somebody, a friend of a friend, hey, you need, if you need assistance, to talk to them, to work with them, or willing to provide that assistance, if you can just get the door open to us.
Brian, I do very much appreciate what Ms. Gwen indicated. Words are always important. And I do appreciate the word restoration of a renovation. I think restoration would be an accurate word for how we present this moving forward.
Yes.
We can word it from that point forward, this point forward on renovation, restoration, not renovation, restoration. But if anybody is interested, the advertisement is on, will be on the county website. So that's an easy place to get contact information. They would contact our office, we would get the information to them. The first step would be to go to this pre-bid meeting to find out more about the project. The architect will be here to go into more detail about the project. And then they can move through the process of being pre-qualified. So the first step, if anybody to ask you in the general public, how do we do this? The advertisement is on the Spalding County website that starts that process of who they contact.
We need to start thinking, public hearings and stuff like that, we got to start getting ourselves ready to go for, hey, this is what's happening. ourselves ready to go for, hey, this is what's happening. This is going to be a big issue. And in five, we're talking five weeks out from now, we'll know where we stand, and then we're going to have to do something different.
Well, we've come this far. I mean, we've worked hard to get the funding, you know, we've done everything we needed to do to get to this point, you know, we just, we don't need to keep moving forward now to find the people to do the work.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's all we have, unless any of our staff has anything to end. I think we're good, sir.
All right. Do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. 3-0. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Deandre, mics, please.